It's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting order. Ken, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Wager.
Here.
Commissioner Steeler.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Stender.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Chair Gerard.
Here.
Thank you. All seven.
We're asked if you're able, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation on our behalf indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Chair's looking for a motion to approve the agenda, and there's been a request that we switch items seven and eight and have the proposed zoning discussion first and then the public hearing following that. So with that, the Chair is looking for a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion second, non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We'll move on to an open forum. We ask if anyone wishes to speak today to any issue, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and spend a couple of minutes telling us your thoughts. Would anyone wish to speak during the open forum? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to item six. Chair is looking for excuse me, the Chair is looking for a motion for the consent and gender items, which is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting November 13, 2024.
I'll make a motion, accept it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Abstained.
Motion carries. Item, the new item seven is the proposed zoning ordinance text amendments. I'm not sure, is that you, Ken, is it our
I'll start it off, Mr. Chair.
Honored consultant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before you this evening in your packet, there's a whole lot of stuff for the zoning code text amendments. Broken it up into two sections. First section, if you will, are updates to the definitions. Second part is some rearranging of some landscape standards and lighting standards that are in the code. A little background for the commissioners that remember, almost a year ago, we started this process with MSA Services, Claire is part of that team, to restructure, reorganize, make the zoning code better, more user-friendly for both staff, commissioners, and the public and developers. Went through a process of what we called reorganizing the architecture, the arrangement, the what items are going first and what items will be last in the code. Commission approved that or recommended approval of that on April 10th. Council approved that reorganization on April 22nd. There were no word changes in that. It was just simply reorganizing. We are now to what I would call phase two of the project, where we are now starting to tackle changing words. And again, we've broken that down into two parts for this evening. First part is going through the definitions. And what we have found, my experience, Claire's experience, Abby's experiences, that there were redundant and unnecessary definitions. There were some definitions that needed clarifying. There, we wanted to modify or change definitions to make sure they're consistent with building code and state law. And then we added several new definitions that, in our opinion, reflect current zoning practices, needs in the city, things that are just now happening that weren't done, what, in 2010, whenever this was last put together. The second part, again, we are proposing reorganizing the, some of the lighting and landscape standards. There were sections and pieces of those scattered throughout the code and the proposed reorganization of those, just organizes those into one area. So tonight, we want to go through as much of this as we can with the commission. This is not the public hearing. This is your first attempt or bite at the apple. Hopefully, we can get through all these, have some clear discussion, guidance, explanations, and we'll answer questions, Claire and I will. And then with that, we'll finalize whatever we get through this evening and bring that back for a public hearing, probably in January, for formal adoption. So again, our goal tonight is to go through those pieces, section by section, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Claire, and she'll walk us through that. And then Mr. Miller apparently has a question.
I do, Ken. Can we, as a, as a commission, be confident that nothing in the code was changed other, because obviously, we can't put the old code next to it and go side by side with each of these, other than the things that we're going to address that are crossed out and adjust it?
Correct. Yes, that, that, good point. Everything that's new language is bolded and underlined, and anything that has the strikeout are things we're deleting. But anything that doesn't show a change is the same.
If I just can say for the commissioners that are new at going through the ordinance, this is where we dig heavily into the minutia. So even though we have some stuff that is highlighted and struck, also, if you read the entire thing, if you find any errors in the definitions that we had, now's the time to bring it up. I believe that the plan here, we go through all the definitions tonight, we give it a thumbs up. We've kind of seen that for the last time unless there's some major problem, and the next time we see it will be an aggravate for a public hearing. So I really encourage you when we see these, starting tonight, to read it all, and if you still have insomnia, please call me and I'll work with you on that. So with that, it's all yours, boss.
All right. Thank you, Chair and commission members. As Ken mentioned, I'm Claire Stickler with MSA Professional Services. I've been working with Ken and Abby on the first part of the project and a few different staff-level meetings where we sat and went through these definitions page by page. I'm happy to go through piece by piece on all 28 pages, or we can just talk about some of the highlights. I know that Chair Gerard sent Ken some questions to point out and for discussion that I'm happy to go over and start there, or if anybody has questions to kick off. I really think that almost everything that we have proposed as a strikeout either isn't mentioned anywhere in the code, so staff found to be redundant, unnecessary, so anything that's a full strikeout came from that, as well as if it mentioned a specific state law, we struck that out to keep it general because those change pretty often, and the numbers can change, or they get amended to something different, or they get cut out completely. That happens as well. So as, and then we also have quite a few references throughout where it said, you know, see other definition. I think there was maybe 12 or 14 instances of that, and so staff felt that getting rid of that, making clear, you know, this is the way we're going to, this is the way it's termed throughout the code. That's why it says, see this definition. It's not termed or referenced as the other one, so we removed all of that. So that's where anything that's a full strike through came from on the staff level and our determination for that. We also combed through, you know, not only some codes that I've worked on, that the city attorney has worked on in other communities, that Ken has looked at to kind of see how are some of these definitions getting bulked up, right? I think inoperable vehicle is one. I think our, the Forest Lake definition was pretty simple. It was one line. We expanded that definition to be more specific, have a few more items as to what makes it an inoperable vehicle that can help staff with, yeah, but it used to be a vehicle incapable of movement under its own power. Now, we're recommending any vehicle that cannot be driven or propelled under its own power in its existing condition, or because it's wrecked, junked, dismantled, et cetera. So that not only helps with staff administration, but enforcement with, you know, junk vehicles, issues, neighbor, neighbor disputes, things like that. So I'm happy to go through some of those, I mean, we, I think maybe just some of those brand-new ones that we're recommending to start, or if anybody has questions to kick off, I'm happy to start there as well.
Commissioners, any questions? Wherever you're comfortable starting at.
To clarify, could you just maybe go through what the Chair presented?
Sure.
So my nickel on this, as I said, about nine or 10, that I had questions on it, and I don't think any of them were tied to the ones that were changing.
No, I don't think so.
Mr. Chair, I also have, I went through and I have questions about some of the definitions or some things that, that I think there might be a better definition or, or changes, so, and just some questions about some of them.
Okay. I'd be happy to start with the ones that Chair Gerard sent me, and then we can move on to yours. Does that sound good?
How about we, just going back and forth scrolling. I put mine alphabetically, yours?
They're in the order of this thing.
Just jump in. If we come to a letter and go back, and then by the time we get to the bottom, we'll be at Z.
Thank you.
Perfect. So the first question was a clarification on if the city had its own building code, because a few times, we've struck out in reference just whatever code the city has adopted. Sometimes it's the International Building Code, sometimes it's the state building code. Sometimes the state adopts the Internet. There's a whole book of building codes that's kind of outside the realm of the zoning ordinance, and so that's why we changed that to keep it general for whichever one at the time the City of Forest Lake has adopted and the building inspector has adopted.
Yep, and that's on page 26 of whatever materials you have.
So I think you just wanted a clarification, Chair, and, yes.
Do we, right now, have an adopted building code? Okay. And, and I just didn't want there to be a gap between having these in place and then making sure that we already had an adopted building code. Thank you.
And then just for reference and clarification on the record, our building code is adopted through a separate section of the city code, not within the zoning code. So even if we're monkeying around in the zoning codes on that, building code adoption provision will still remain within the city code, thereby remaining as a regulation within the city.
Just, just a quick
I'm up to the D's.
Right, well, just to, well, sorry. On, on the area, the net developable area, thank you, thank you, thank you. That's been something that we've had questions about, and so I, I really like the addition of net developable area that deals with the deletion of wetlands and some of that other stuff.
And that's on page 25.
Yep. Those districts and the types of uses.
And I'm fine with that. You know, I just find, you know, I also know that we want to be one and done with some of these sections.
Yeah, but I mean dwellings, daycare facilities, senior living nursing homes, and some of the agriculture, like livestock operations. Those ones, we kind of held on touching until we dug into the use, other than moving accessory apartment, because it's a type of dwelling, under dwelling.
And my question on accessory apartment, it says within an existing owner-occupied, single-family dwelling. So to me, that says we would not allow an accessory apartment to be a new construction. In other words, a, a, a new house being built having, from the day it was designed and as it was built, having an accessory apartment in it. Because we've got that within an existing owner-occupied home. And, um, yes, I realize that I'm on the border of Forest Lake and Scandia, but right across the border, they are building a house that has an apartment, and it's
Right.
It's being built that way.
I get phone calls often if people ask, you know, in other communities, if people who, can I, if I buy this lot, can I build with this in it? I mean, I
Do we need the word existing, I guess is my question.
I don't, I don't think so.
Let's scratch here.
Yeah, let's scratch it.
Moving on, what's next?
That's great. That, that helps me.
I'm F. I'm going to go to the Fs next.
Okay. And I had the same questions about how is a duplex different than a single-family attached dwelling?
I think it's the common ownership line is what really make, is, the duplex, I guess, is more intended that the building is owned by one person rented out, whereas the single-family detached are ownership. Or it doesn't specify. It could be either, but
And that was really common in older cities after World War II, where you turned a single-family home into a duplex or into a fourplex, and it was the same owner.
Right.
But I'm not sure we have any of those older, but we'll be able to.
Regardless, I think it's going to allow it in an existing or a future new without the word existing.
Thank you. How is a single-family dwelling detached different from a accessory dwelling? Because we have different definitions for those.
Detached is just like over by the high school. We have, there's a single family detached, all in an HOA, right by the V-doc.
Okay. But that is a small, a necessary dwelling is a smaller independent constructed on a permanent foundation and on the same lot.
That's the ADUs.
Yeah.
Well, a single-family detached is your typical, what I would call typical, single-family home. And we have minimum sizes for those of 960 square feet in the uses.
Okay. So a, an accessory dwelling could be a single-family detached dwelling?
It is. It says a smaller independent.
It is, yeah, but it can only be on a lot that already has a home. It can't be alone.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
You done with dwellings?
Yes, I am, sir.
I might have asked. You got any ease?
Yes, and it's a, it's a thank you, thank you, thank you for the definition of easement.
Yeah, that was lacking, the previous one. This one's a lot more.
On my notes here, I have it in capital letters, yes, with exclamation points.
Well, good. I'm glad you like it.
And then equestrian uses? Quite frankly, there are a lot of folks, especially around here, that have, have, something would be considered an equestrian use, but they're either a foster facility, or they're, they're not actively riding, racing, or breeding their horses. They just exist there.
Sure.
Acres for life is another place that is, they're not really riding, racing, or breeding. And so I'm wondering if we could just put a period after training of horses, period, if that would be reasonable.
So that's an existing use. Are you saying we want to trim that back?
Yes, because in the olden days, we didn't have people that had horses as pasture pets. Horses were only around
For work?
Right, but
Chair Gerard, Commissioner Young, members of the commission, the only thing I would encourage you to maybe flag it for when we're going through our districts, because I would say that what you're describing is a domestic farm animal versus maybe elsewhere in the code where we say equestrian uses for, you know, maybe commercial purposes or nonprofit purposes. I wouldn't necessarily want to monkey with this one quite yet, because we have a whole laundry list in the egg and the rural residential districts that, that could directly relate to this. I, I think we even later get into something about, maybe it was stables.
Yep.
That kind of gets into that same thing, because we did talk about the nonprofits and some of the riding facilities here and how it wasn't well-defined, so.
And on page 32, we have two other horse definitions also.
Had the question. And then my, on feedlot, the, the sentence style is, is really different than everybody else. I think Oh. Under feedlot, in that paragraph, I think you need a period after domestic farm animals, because it doesn't read right. If you leave in the shall be considered feedlots, because you already, that's the definition.
So I think, I agree, but this is language directly from MPCA and their definition of a feedlot?
Yep.
So I mean, we, I agree. It's wonky, but
Moving on. Question and answer.
We'll double, we'll double-check.
Yeah, I'll double-check that, but I'm almost positive I looked at that one for MPCA, like consistency when we were going through this, but I'll double-check.
Then on floor area? As I'm reading that, I'm assuming that this is only to be used for commercial uses, and we don't have any interest in having floor area defined for, other than commercial uses?
I think that is the only time it's referenced in
Well, we do have a minimum floor area for single-family homes.
Oh, you do?
The, the definition is pretty clearly not related to single-family homes.
Right. You could adjust, put a sentence after, or excuse me, a period after a particular use, and then clarify that second sentence to pertain to commercial and industrial uses. Is that
We could probably just take a look at it. Are you comfortable if we kind of are flagging them as we go? And then next time we come back in the public hearing, we'll point out some of these ones that definitely were a little tricky.
The chair had flagged flaglot on the top of the page. I'm, I don't know that we have that anyplace in the zoning code, Claire. I looked.
It's not.
It's, if anyplace, it should probably be in the subdivision code.
Yes, I agree.
But we can probably just
The only challenge that I would say is whether or not we reference setbacks of flaglots specifically elsewhere in the code. I don't think we do, but at the moment, we don't know.
Yeah. I did an entire search on American legal with like exact phrasing, and flaglot only showed up in this definition. So unless for some reason, it's in here for, in an existing condition, if some sort of application comes, you know, but there's no stand, form and standard. There's nothing else other than this definition.
I'm okay with whatever the answer, my question was, we, I know we wouldn't allow them, because you don't get, you don't end up with the road frontage you need
Right, they're not recommended.
And I didn't know if we were referencing somewhere that, we don't allow flaglots, but I don't
No, it's not referenced anywhere, which is
Again, not in the zoning code, but we may want to include that in the subdivision code, so that's, if it's going to be anyplace, it should be in subdivision.
I agree.
So we probably can strike it from here.
Whatever you want to do. All right, so we've made it, I think, through the Fs. The rest of the commissioners
Isn't it fun? F for fun.
Now that you know that you're going to earn every nickel tonight. Have I missed anything, commissioners, that are fairly quiet? I will check every few pages to make sure you're awake. I, I'm up somewhere later now, so
M is, M is your next one, Chair. Yep.
Under health and recreation facility? It looks fairly together, but I'm thinking of someplace like the Y that has a gym. Is that something that we should add, or we'll just say that includes, and we'll just assume that anything else that could possibly be in there? I mean, they've got a pool, and that's a health, recreation facility.
Right, right.
So would we just say such as, but not limited to?
Yeah, that's probably, or, or the like. I mean, you have game courts, exercise equipment. I think that's kind of covering some of those things, but
Walking track.
I don't think we want to necessarily list everything. We kind of want to have that slight flexibility when we get a request for an indoor pickleball facility.
And so that's, that's why I was thinking it should include, but not be limited to.
That language, yeah.
Please. Under home occupation? Again, I'm looking at, at how, the way it flows like all the rest of the things. And so I think that maybe it should perhaps be home occupation, dwelling or attached accessory building on the same lot, used for.
Okay.
All right? To sort of follow the same style?
Sure, yeah. I can amend that. Yeah, absolutely.
And no, I'm not thrilled with horse show, but whatever.
We'll flag that.
They're competitions. They're not shown to
Yeah, we'll flag
Public and, yes.
All three of those, horse show, horse training facility, commercial, and horse training facility private for that uses discussion.
Well, and do some of those, are they covered by the definition of equestrian uses? We'll look at all that.
Okay, yeah.
Then my next one was, thank you, thank you, thank you for inoperable vehicle.
You're welcome.
And then I had on, my next one was on livestock.
Livestock operations?
I figured you would. But 11 or more animal units. I think that a goat, two goats equals one animal unit. And so are we, and it's a question here, since we have a lot of sheep and goat husbandry, it's occurring a lot more than it used to. We would be looking at, say, not having any rules or, or considerations for 22 goats, or empty squat chickens and roosters?
Great point. I would ask that we maybe leave livestock operations, and we lump that together with our equestrian uses, our horse shows, for when we look at the egg and the rural residential districts. Our community is changing. We have some historically older agricultural uses, livestock operations. We certainly don't want to preclude those from happening, but I know that our regulations regarding livestock are old and likely don't fit the Forest Lake of today and probably the Forest Lake of the future, and so we really need to take a good look at those. So if we can keep that the way it is, and you'd be okay putting a pause in that one, would be my recommendation.
Yep, I put a flag next to that for my notes, just for the future, especially that 11 units.
Nine on that same page. It just says line lot related. I think you mean lot-line related?
Yeah, good call. Another typo.
Claire and I have both been through this about 10 times each, and the Chair knows. All right, I start. Thank you for
Yes, thank you.
In a previous life, I did ordinances too, and in a previous life, I did, you know, 100-page contracts, and all the words start to go together. And yes, I get it.
Yep.
That's why we have you all here to help. Next one the Chair had was manufactured home.
Yep, on the next page.
So this was in regards to not, you know, we think of manufacturers' home as they bring in the trailer like we have up here. My question was regarding modulars that they, you know, bring in a quarter of the house, and they put them on a foundation. They look like a house when they're done. Where does that fit? Is that a manufactured home? Do we consider it a stick-built home?
So the state law and the urban department, the Department of Housing and Urban Development have really stringent regulations on manufactured homes and what that means in those requirements. Modular homes, as they sit on a permanent foundation in our home, fit in with those regulate, like, I, I don't, it's not to my knowledge that the city prohibits whether or not you're gonna build the home there on your lot, or it's coming in on two truck pieces, if it's on that permanent foundation, it's considered through building code, a single-family home. We could add a modular home definition if you wanted, but we as staff think that it already is allowed inherently because that permanent foundation piece that...
Works for me. Under manufacturing light?
Mm-hmm.
You've got nuisances which would cause adverse effects. So, in a future time when...
I think it was intended to be which would not cause adverse effects.
Yeah, I think so too, I think that's a typo.
Well, no, the process does not create, so it, it, you don't need the would not, I'm wondering if it should be could instead of would.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, I see, yes, because we already say they do not create those things.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Wood and, wood is a higher standard than could.
Yeah, I'm, I'm changing it to could, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we just felt that, well, light manufacturing is a use in the use chart and didn't really have a delineation in the code, so that's where this came from.
No, I, I liked the definition, I just...
Yeah. Nope, I, that could, we'll change wood to could.
Previous lives.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think, I don't know what Chair Gerard said.
I'm up to yours.
Oh, yeah.
I did have a question in HOAs where they go.
The only other, on, on musa?
Mm-hmm.
I think that the word and which is identified in the city's comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Is, I think there's a better, I think grammar...
I think in general, we'll just take a double check on this one too, because we have many lands in our musa that don't have water and sewer.
Okay.
And so we might need to tweak that one a little bit, its areas, so for a little bit of a lesson, we have our big, our big city map and we have the, the musa boundaries. The musa to twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty, twenty-forty, that we say by twenty-thirty, or the, the decade year of twenty-twenty, excuse me, twenty-twenty to twenty-thirty, we'll put our urban infrastructure in this area, and then the next decade, we'll put the urban infrastructure in this area. The challenge is in Forest Lake, as many of you know, we haven't necessarily been proactive in building out our infrastructure. We've been waiting for infrastructure to be built out by development, so we don't have that, the definition isn't really corresponding there. So, I'm just gonna ask that we put a pause in that one, and we'll, at the time of public hearing, we'll bring you back something that makes maybe a little bit more sense.
That's fine.
I'll up to the others.
Okay, just a minute.
Other commissioners, any that we missed?
Got something, a grammar thing under motor vehicles, but I can't find it right now, so never mind.
Okay.
Can always send...
Yeah, certainly reach out to me, Susan.
Mr. Roberts, email, and he's more than happy to.
On nursing home?
Yes.
Is there reason that we're at five or more persons?
State law. So this stuff, and all of the adjustments to this came from their state. The, the state law reads, as you had currently had it, minus, they had the addition of of five or more persons. So, I had recommended putting that in to be consistent with that definition. And then they also had the addition of clinic, doctor's office, diagnostic and treatment center, or residential program license pursuant, pursuant to Minnesota state statute. So, that's all from the state law.
So, a care facility such as, I know of at least two in Forest Lake, that have a maximum of three to four persons? Do we need to worry about that or not?
That'd be a residential facility, I think.
Yeah, so that would fall under another use.
Thank you. Public composting facility?
Okay.
Oh, I think, did we talk about removing this one?
We did, but we're still gonna have a facility within the city, it'll be the county environmental center.
That's right, that's right.
But I think what it was is that we were gonna change it, that it was contracted by the public, not the city.
By, what I'm, yeah, I was suggesting by a public entity.
Yep, okay, I'll get that added in. By a public entity.
And just because I am the trash lady, the, the recyclable materials and your recycling, please use the definition in the solid waste and recycling administrative rules for Washington County. These, these are not congruent with those rules.
Okay.
And it's, we need to operate under Washington County's rules. So if we could use their definitions for recyclable materials and recycling and recycling center and refuse, that would, that would be helpful.
Can look into that for sure.
If we can back up on page forty-one to recreation equipment, that was the next one the chair had a question on.
Oh, yeah.
He questioned in the middle there, when we say not exceeding thirty feet?
Yes.
That standard is also in our vehicle section in the code of one fifty-three, two sixty, I looked it up today, where we say you can have, you can bring a recreational trailer home not exceeding thirty feet in length. So if we change it here, we gotta think about changing it other, in other places. I understand the point about trailers...
My question to...
Trails are getting bigger, whether it's pontoons or campers or fifth wheels, all, all those are getting larger. At some point, they're going to be too big to be on many of our residential lots.
I'm with you on that, and my question is, do we, do we really want to go there? And have to deal with it, but I, I understand, I just wanted to point it out.
Well, it's, it might be worth a discussion when we get into the uses, because do you want, and a lot of the neighbors, neighborhoods I can think of, the older neighborhoods, somebody having a thirty-five-foot trailer parked in a travel trailer, camper trailer, uh, car hauling trailer parked in their driveway, which sticks out so far you can barely see down the street, or you can't pull out of your driveway because it's blocking the view.
Or it blocks the sidewalk.
Yes. So it gets to a point where they're too long, I'm sure the thirty-foot was picked, because most homes have a thirty-foot front yard setback.
I'm good.
But I, I think we should just, like some of these others, ponder that, think about that when we can circle back to it with the uses.
I'm up to the S's.
Under restaurant, fast food? I realize it was in the old one, but do we really need the word inexpensive there, under...
Oh, no.
I think that would be questioned by many folk.
These days, it's kind of expensive to get fast food. Yeah, I can remove, we can remove that. Quickly, we didn't, we just breezed past, also in P's, Chair, you had a protective or restrictive covenant, a question about that? I don't think we addressed that yet, that's a...
Uh, where do H, uh...
Yeah, page forty, the last definition, you had a question about HOAs and...
But we don't define them, I mean, yeah, so we have the covenants.
Correct. But they're not actually mentioned anywhere in the code, homeowners associations. I did a search and they're not, they're not mentioned.
It likely could be something that could be mentioned in the definitions of the subdivision regulations, because we run into homeowners associations more frequently there.
Yeah, and the, the protective and restrictive covenant is specifically for that cluster housing PUD section in the zone, that's the only time it's mentioned, and it's mentioned, I think, as a requirement to have that type of development, is that you need, you have to show restrictive, or provide restrictive covenants for those homes.
The area where I live has a restricted covenant, that there shall be no further subdividing of any of the properties.
Sure, and that's probably from the subdivision code, not the zoning code.
It happened before.
And a developer can do that at any ti, I mean, really, it doesn't, the city doesn't have to direct them to do that.
All right, I'm good.
My next one is a T.
A what?
Is a T, you said you had some S's.
Oh, yeah, I have a subdivision minor.
Oh, yes.
So, I don't know what page am I on.
It's on page forty-five.
Thank you. But a question was at the end, or, not involving any new street or road, or the extension of municipal fa- facilities. So how do they get sewer and water was my question, it's, just hooking up, is that considered an extension or...
No.
Okay.
It's, if, if the roads are placed and the utilities are placed and there's a thousand feet of frontage and they want to make three lots, they can just do it through a minor subdivision, because they're not creating new, any new public utilities or a new street right of way. They're just subdividing the land without any public improvements.
That's, that's what I wanted to clarify, because, you know, to me, it looked like I couldn't hook up the water and sewer.
The extension of the utilities means the public water main, the public sewer line being extended.
Right.
Not tapping into those.
Or the ability to drill a well, build a septic in our more rural areas.
Yeah, if it's an area outside of the musa, yeah.
On page forty-four, under private street?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
That's the only one you get.
And, and I think it's, and the word specify that, need to be deleted, please, because, and provisions must exist. The street must support immedi- emergency vehicles and specify that doesn't make sense in the sentence, and provisions must exist.
Well, I think it's, and provisions must exist for ongoing maintenance.
Right, well, for the whole rest of the sentence, but I was just looking for the, the two words specify that to be deleted.
I don't have an issue with that, if that...
Suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
On page forty-five, we, Chair, you had a question about tavern or bar?
Oh, so my question on taverns and bars, um, you know, in the old days, we used to have taverns and bars, you'd go in and maybe you could get a frozen pizza or something. But now, isn't the state law that a fair amount of revenue has to come from food?
I checked with our state clerk today on this. Well, first of all, tavern or bar is listed as a use in the MU one and the MU two districts. The city is trying to get away from that, and we require facilities that serve alcohol to also be part of a restaurant. I don't know if there's a specific dollar breakdown or percentage of sales breakdown, but according to clerk, if someone came in and just wanted a full liquor license for a tavern or bar, that doesn't fit what our liquor license regulations now say or would allow. So that's, we, we almost have to leave it in right now, because we have it listed as a use in our MU one, MU two districts. If we strike that as a possible use in those districts, then we could strike the definition at the same time. But since it's already in, but I think going forward, we don't want them. And so the way to do that will be to take it out of the uses and delete the definition.
I'm, I'm just looking to get my questions answered, I'm good with the answer, I need to know what it is.
That's my answer.
And you're sticking to it?
For today.
We certainly don't want to delete a definition if we've got it identified in a district, because then if we have it in a district and Joe Blow comes in and says, I want to do that, we're like, oh my gosh, what is that? We run into that sometimes, so...
Under temporary seasonal?
Mm-hmm.
Could it be indoors and/or outdoors?
Sure.
Or is it required to be both indoors and outdoors?
No, I think or was more of actual, the intent when we adjusted this.
We just changed the and to or with it, we don't need the and/or.
However y'all want to do it.
Okay, we'll even add a period at the end, too.
Oh, yeah, that one's missing one.
It was a...
I saw that, so...
How about the lies, man?
Okay.
So we're requiring veterinarians to be either large animal or small animal, but they can't be a combo practice?
I guess we didn't, we didn't think about it in that, that lens, we felt that the existing veterinary definition didn't have, wasn't specific.
Okay.
I guess, I don't know if there's a concern having them together.
I actually don't know, the uses define larger, small, later.
It just says veterinary.
Just says, I think, veterinary, so maybe we revisit that one when we look at those uses?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
I know we only want to do it once, Chair Gerard, I understand, but I also am a big proponent that when we're looking at the uses that are allowed in a specific district, we look back and we say, this is what the use is. We all know what that uses, are we okay with that use, or do we need to tweak it again?
And, and I didn't, I just had the question.
No, it's a good, it's a good comment, because I, I don't know if there's a specific reason we wouldn't allow a joint practice, because like they're not defined right now, or they're not defined and the uses don't expand on that either with the small or large, so...
And then my last one was yard waste facility. It should be for the, for the storage or composting. Both the, our existing is, is just a storage, they don't do a lot of composting there.
Okay.
So I think, yeah.
Is it storage or composting, or storage and?
And/or.
And/or, okay.
And Chairman Gerard had a, a typo at the top of...
Yeah, on page forty-eight, number one, front yard, it should be a yard extending along the total width instead of the toll width.
Either total or full.
I think it was supposed to be full.
Because below rear yard is a yard extending along the full width of the rear of the lot.
I don't care what word you put here, but I know toll is not the right one.
You're correct, toll definitely isn't, I'm glad you caught that.
Well, that's it, well, that's what we have on definitions, if anybody has any other...
Commissioners, any other common concerns?
Question, do we need a definition? And I don't know how to explain the concept. When a, a house is built taller than surrounding houses and shades or removes the access to, for instance, enough sun for an existing solar on the rooftop, or shades it so that an existing garden or something can't be grown anymore because it needs eight hours of sunlight. Do we have any definitions for that kind of, um, building, which we don't have now?
Is that a definition or a use?
Well, we're gonna, if we have, we're gonna have to define it sometime.
I think what I hear you saying is that, correct me if I'm wrong, I, it sounds like there might potentially be a concern or a concern in the future about the amount of sunlight a property would be limited because of their neighbor.
A neighbor building something that...
Right now, we don't, I don't believe, have in our code performance standards or any sort of requirements for whatever they call like solar sunlight protection. Access. I wouldn't suggest that we put a definition in here until such time as we vet through whether or not we want regulations like that.
I think somewhere in there, it's buried, not in definition, but in one of the...
Solar access? Yeah, so, solar energy systems, or...
I don't remember where it is, but it springs a...
Well, look, we, as you know, we're gonna continue to unearth the buried things and bring them to you little by little.
So commissioners, we're moving on now to landscaping and lighting, but just a remembrance that this is what I'm talking about, the minutia. So I, I would expect a lot more excitement from the rest of the commissioners next time on minutia.
Claire, do you want to just give a quick overview on this, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So, as part of this, we... Yeah, absolutely. So as part of this, we kind of had talked about low hanging fruit or issues that staff has to jump around to find lighting or landscaping, talked about in four different areas of the code or however that may be. And so through analysis, lighting and landscaping consistently came up and actually, um, lighting in particular, every time it was mentioned in any of the minimum standards for design outside of the lighting regulations, it had the same sub-regulations in every single chapter for lighting. Landscaping was a little different. Some of it had some crossover in the different uses, but NC, B1, B2, um, they, like, and, oh, where's all the other frickin', all the other districts? There's B3. So many pages. I think mixed use, yeah, all had the same, some had less, some had more, but they were all consistently the same. So staff is recommending on that one that all of those get removed from the specific standards to just then reference the lighting section and then have all of those special regulations, especially since every district had the same one referenced in the lighting section of your ordinance, which is, section, if I can get back to my cover memo here.
It starts on page seventy-six.
Yep, and lighting is one fifty-three, one thirty. So we're recommending removing all of the lighting regulations from the different minimum standards for design sections. Simply saying, refer to, you know, one fifty-three, one thirty, although we didn't put the number in in case that number changes. Um, and then same goes for the landscaping. We removed that, added that into its own section in one fifty-three, one thirty-seven, which has all of the landscape design regulations and made those specific to each zoning district as it was in the minimum standards. But again, all of it lives in landscaping, all of it lives in lighting, rather than having these subsections with those regulations for staff to, staff and developers, when they say, well, what do I need in a landscape plan? What do I need in a lighting plan? Well, now I'll be in one spot. So that's the gist of it. Happy to answer any.
And clarify, none of the words changed.
Correct. Well, I mean, there's some addition language of go to this section, but the standards did not change. Yeah, there's, there's some language change just to re-reference things, but yeah, all of the standards stayed the same.
I have some, um, I think one needs to be corrected, but you can probably educate me and tell me I'm wrong. So if we start on page forty-nine, one fifty-three point oh seventy-four, it's the minimum standards, which also includes B3. But it's not listed there. You got NC, B1, B2. But then, when you go down to page fifty-seven, B3 lighting is covered there.
Oh, I see that.
But I don't think it's supposed to be. Well, actually, B3 is, starts on page fifty-six. I think that whole thing is supposed to move to the next section, maybe?
Yeah, I wonder if something just got mis-laid out in my amendments.
So when you go through oh eighty, that's where you cover B3, which is on page fifty-seven.
Right.
So I think, just look and see, I think that whole thing needs to move just to a different section.
Yeah.
Or else not say all commercial business districts.
Well, they call out specific ones and then the next one they call the I to BP and B3. So it's, and we don't call it up. So it's gotta be moved from one or the other.
Yep. Like I said, it could be my layout, too, but that's, regardless, yeah, I'll make sure.
Leave it in your trusting hands.
Yeah, no, I, I'll make sure that that gets sorted out for the public hearing.
And then if we could go to, um, page seventy-five. Uh, where do I want to be here? Under landscape design? Where is that?
Landscape is further out.
Yeah, we're, that's.
Landscape is.
Oh, there it is. Oh, on page.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-five, or page twenty-seven of the MSA report, but page seventy-five.
Okay.
Of the report. Under O, it calls one fifty-three point one three four. Everywhere else, you call one fifty-three, one three four through, one fifty-three point one four two. This is the only one that doesn't have the, the entire, and it.
Okay.
I think it should, but if you would just verify that.
No, it should. Yeah, I think that's a good catch. And we might even remove the numbers and reference the landscape in case the numbers adjust, I think, was, so I might have to change all of them.
I, I leave it in your trusting hands.
But yes, that has to change regardless.
And then my last item's a discussion item, which I'm sure we'll all be thrilled on. On page eighty and eighty-one, we talk about landscaping minimums. And we have these dimensions and I, we are yet, in my mind, to see a commercial application where we can meet what our, what our requirement is. And so whether it's now we have this discussion or later you guys come back with something, but if we constantly cannot meet it, then we got a problem. You know, we didn't meet it on Washington County. We didn't meet it with Ford. We didn't meet it with the dental clinic going up. I honestly can't list one that we have made it, but maybe Don does.
It is a struggle. You're absolutely right.
So I think we should look at making it more realistic. I mean, I.
So I know that this was brought up recently internally from our Public Works Director asking the phrase, whatever happened to developers paying their fee in lieu of the trees? Um, and I guess, you know, we've had some staffing changes. Yes, I've been around for a little while, but two and a half years, think maybe those practices when there was former staff, that when a development couldn't meet what I would say is fairly aggressive landscaping requirements here, then the city would require them to pay a fee on top of the amount of trees that they wouldn't put in. Um, I, that has never been well spelled out in the code and probably practice that wasn't carried on by Ken and I. So I think we need to look at that policy of are we going to relax our standards or keep what I would say are still fairly aggressive standards, but then also request tree mitigation fees when they can't meet those landscaping standards? It's a policy-based question and I think we can certainly come back to with two options. One, here's our existing and then the practices, if they don't meet those standards, they would pay tree mitigation fees. Or here's a one that's more realistic in terms of developments actually being able to achieve our, our regulations. That's up to you, I think, to make a recommendation on, and ultimately it would be up to the council to decide what that final policy would be.
I'm, I'm good either way, but I just think we need to somehow realistically allow these businesses an option, if they can hit it, that here's what it's going to cost you.
Right.
You know, it's, it's nothing to do with what you got in your corrections.
No, but it's a good thing to bring to staff's attention.
You know, and our comp plan references natural resources and, and, you know, valuing trees and, and, and landscape areas. Um, and so figuring out, maybe when we get into uses, that's when we dive into that more. I, what are your thoughts?
Um, I would say that now would be the time that we'd be talking about what kind of policy we'd want for those landscaping standards, or we can always come back to it. Um, we didn't intend to necessarily change a lot of guts when we were kind of starting to bring these things. We really want to get those low hanging fruits, but I recognize that in these low hanging fruits, reducing redundancies, we've got some policy-based things that are going to come up that we probably should be vetting out now.
We could spend a whole meeting just going through landscape standards.
Hey, as long as we're throwing fuel at a fire, on page eighty-one G, we allow no more than fifty percent B1 species.
Yeah.
In, in this day and age, it seems awful high. Um, you know, I lost most of my trees on my lot to Emerald Ash Bor. And when the arborist showed it, I asked him what to plant and he goes, plant whatever you want, but only plant one of them.
Yeah.
And it just, you'll just die and then the next one will die and the next one. I didn't really think it was a solid strategy, but it's the one I'm currently invoking.
Well, I've got about twelve maples in my front yard, so maybe I should start replanning one, once by once.
There's some out east on the maples that's.
Yep.
I forget what it is. I'll be dead.
So I've heard.
So I, I, I don't know if that, in this day and age, if that number's just too high.
Right.
And I'm good with whatever you do, but. I, I have nothing else.
And, and one of my things that on the neighborhood commercial, the additional landscaping elements, I thought was really good because one of the, the hits that we take is that our commercial areas aren't inviting and our existing commercial areas aren't inviting. And as we have new neighborhood commercial areas toward the southern area of our city, requiring those additional elements now is, we can't fix Lake and Broadway. I mean, they are what they are, but as we look forward, we can like not make those same mistakes. So I was, I thought that the neighborhood commish- commercial and that those additional elements were really good.
Hearing the, at least a few of you kind of expressed some concerns for what we've got right here in the landscaping standards, what I would recommend is possibly giving Claire, Ken and I an opportunity to retool this a little bit so that it's, um, yes, we're still reducing the redundancies, redundancies, but we're giving you some better, um, and our development community some better policy standards to follow, or, uh, standards to follow for, for landscaping. I think, um, you know, we can probably bring back an ordinance amendment to you that has half as many words.
That always works for me.
And probably convey the same.
But it still just says effective, you know.
But say about the same amount of thing.
In meeting what you're looking for in certain districts.
And knowing that this is the kind of first two sections, lighting and landscaping, if we're kind of operating under that policy, hey, staff, consultant, hit those low hanging fruits and then also recommend maybe industry standard and, you know, here's our past practice is what industry standard, this is what we propose, and get your gut checks on those. I think that could probably make things go probably even quicker.
Yeah.
In these tweaking, you know, these subsets that we keep bringing back to you. I see some.
Commissioners, your thoughts?
Nodding.
In order to be heard, you need to speak.
Yes.
Yes.
Works for me.
They're killing me.
So if I can put a bow on this for tonight, the consensus, I think, with the definitions, we're there with some edits. Clarify those. The second part with the landscaping and the lighting, that needs some more work. Have you had some great comments there? Uh, we'll do further researching and give some alternatives. I, I agree on your point, Mr. Chair, about the plantings. It's, it's a battle and it rarely is successful to get that number of plants on, in a new project. So we can look at some other industry standards of what is more realistic. If we want to get into the fees, the fee lieu, find the language for that, if that's a thing we want to go down. So I think my sense would be if you're all comfortable with the definitions with those tweaks, we could certainly schedule that part for a public hearing if we want to get that on the books, or do we wait and get some of these other things done and then have a public hearing for more sections at a later date? Because what to bring back to landscaping and lighting for another go-through before a public hearing, I believe.
I would like to just make the recommendation, and I know that might take a little bit more time in working with, with Claire and we'll have to just revisit scope and stuff. We'd want to talk with Claire about time and that sort of thing. I am a big proponent of keeping like ordinances with like ordinances, one ordinance on the definitions. Now, that being said, I certainly think that there's also approach that maybe we just shelve definitions. We know the direction on it. We retool landscape and lighting. We come back to you next month with landscape lighting. We flush through those, then we hold a public hearing. I, um, I'm, don't think that there's a right or wrong way to do this, but I do want to do it where it's, where we're not sitting till nine, nine o'clock every night, like, uh, you know, Commissioner, no, 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 Commissioner Young had said this, a lot of heavy material. And if you're going to give us some leeway to go and kind of retool things, come back, let's have another brief discussion on these and then move forward with an ordinance, I think that might help move things along a little bit better for us in terms of the overall success of changing the code quickly. I see quite a number of heads nodding.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
A couple of things in, in the landscape area. Um, when you do the retooling on one fifty-three point one three five, you deleted the entirety of paragraph B. So that means that C and D are going to have to be renumbered. And then on the, um, it says landscape by licensed landscape architect in the state as required by state rules. Um, that's a lot fluffier than most of the things that y'all have this evening.
Okay.
I would say we don't necessarily even have to have it done by a landscape architect from the state of Minnesota. Could be just by a landscape architect, period.
That would, that would be great.
Yeah, by a licensed landscape architect.
Probably even check licensure. And frankly, many of you have probably seen some development plans that might have been some hand-drawn bubbles that say Hickory on it or Elm or whatever, and we've been okay with that, so.
On landscape plans, two-foot contours are pretty big for a landscape plan in terms of drainage and heights and things like that. And when you take a look at the landscape plan section, you, I, I, I'd like you to look at that. I think it should probably be lower than a two-foot contour.
Than a one-foot.
For a landscape plan.
Okay.
Just knowing how I've messed up some of my own personal stuff. Um, and then on one fifty-three point one three six, um, and this is something that, um, is. We've noticed. Um, under A2, establish grass or ground cover within six months after issuance of certificate of occupancy. That's a really long time for bare ground in this city to be, to be shedding soil into our storm sewer system and our lakes and our wetlands and have to be dredged out. And so I don't, when you do the reworking, um, should we consider temporary protective cover immediately or, or as, as soon as possible? Um, a lot of landscape companies have the ability now to do the, the spray thing that will hold dirt. Um, even the use of finished compost as a top just to hold things down really makes a big difference. Um, but this, this is an area where we're having challenges in our city with our lakes, with our stormwater ponds, um, and anything we can do in our requirements to reduce the time that we've got bare dirt. I, I'd really like to see us work on that.
I think what this one is trying to say is right now, if we, uh, or last month even, if we had issued a certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate, certificate of occupancy, it's not likely that there's grass or ground cover going to be there for six months. And so I think, um, what I'm. And so I think what I'm hearing you say is that when there is a prolonged period without the grass or ground cover, that you'd like to see some other cover over that to help protect the ground, to help encourage the growth, that sort of thing, in a lesser amount of time.
To avoid erosion.
Yeah. Okay.
I could think of one recently that just shed a whole bunch of dirt over the sidewalk.
Sounds like that's a public nuisance. You're welcome to file a complaint with it, and we'll take a look.
And, and I also, again, I, I really appreciated seeing the, the neighborhood commercial.
Good.
Editions.
Commissioners, any last comments on the landscaping section? Already comments regarding how can things be ought to move forward?
I think Abby had the best idea.
I'm sorry?
I think Abby had the best idea, actually.
What I heard, and just to clarify, you're good with definitions. Obviously, you'll see that again in a public hearing, but we're going to shelve that for a second. We'll bring back some, could be just like full repeal replace of our lighting and our landscaping to really see that we're meeting the intents of some of the concerns we heard tonight, but that you'd rather adjust those policies now, get it right, to have a better code instead of kind of just trying to do more of this.
Yep.
Great.
Yes.
All right, thank you all. We'll move to item eight on our agenda. It's a public hearing for the City of Forest Lake, twenty forty comprehensive plan amendments. Abby, are you handling this?
I am, thank you, Chair Gerard. Let me just, I thought I would make a PowerPoint for such a boring conversation this evening.
That's boring. This is cool stuff. Pardon? This is cool stuff.
This is cool stuff.
No, I would have to say this was.
It's boring.
A drudgery at best.
We tried, and this is, I will, you know, full disclosure, some of you saw a new name on the staff report, Nathan first with Bolton and Mink was a contract planner with the city when I started here. So this was something that Nathan and I had talked about when I first started in twenty twenty-two, but then in twenty twenty-three, I really had him start to dive in on some analysis for me, because we started to see a lot of inquiries in that Highway sixty-one corridor go for completely residential multifamily development. And I had always kind of heard the city really wanted the Highway sixty-one corridor to be mixed use. And so because of just what was happening in the development community, what was kind of happening with financing, lots of different factors, lots of inquiries for multiple family. There's concern from the planning commission, from the council of how much multifamily is too much multifamily? Maybe we need to do a moratorium. So Nathan and I started this exploration almost two years ago. So his name is on there because he's been, he's been hanging out in the wings of, okay, when's the city going to be ready to have this conversation? In looking through the comprehensive plan and the zoning code, what we did on that Highway sixty-one corridor or any of the areas guided for or zoned mixed use, we said those areas can be mixed use. They can be residential and non-residential. They have to be a minimum of fifty percent residential. They could be one hundred percent. So when the market is wonderful and you're getting financing for multifamily, we're going to see an increase probably in those multifamily developments like we were seeing along the Highway sixty-one corridor. So what we started to do is take a look and have discussions with the Met Council of how much of our future land use and our housing density was weighted in that mixed use category. And as it turns out, there's quite a bit. We say we're going to get a lot of our density along that Highway sixty-one corridor. But a reminder, that was if fifty percent of the acreage develops at residential. If one hundred percent of the acreage develops at residential, we're actually at a much higher density than the Met Council is going to require of us, and definitely that I think the community would want to see. So we had some conversations with the Met Council. We said, we really think we're going to need to retool this because we think that we might have some better data and a better understanding of their requirements and how this could potentially impact the community. And the Met Council said, if you've got some good parameters for how you kind of look at your comp plan, your future land uses and how you're guiding density, let's talk. So what we did is early on, and this was even before twenty-four, we talked with the Met Council about adding in a different parameter in our non-developable land or our inland area that was maybe showing up as potentially developable in the future. But right now, and maybe in the future it isn't. So we currently, if you have a piece of land and it's got right of way road on it, if it's got a steep slope, if it's got wetlands, we net that out and say, that's non-developable area. It's, it's can't be developed. But what we talked about with the Met Council is we said, we have a lot of land area in Forest Lake that are two and a half acres that have a, you know, a house or improvement value of about three hundred thousand dollars. It is most likely those are not going to redevelop in the future to our higher urban density standard. Even if they're in the MUSA boundary, it's just not likely those lands are ever going to be developed to that higher density standard, or at least it's going to be a very long time until the development pressures. The council said, that sounds like undevelopable land to us. So now we've got something that we've started to kind of play with the numbers with the Met Council and say, okay, if we're netting out all of our road right of way, our wetlands, our steep slopes, the things they say we can net out, and we take out those lands that are three hundred thousand dollars in value and two and a half acres and less than two and a half acres greater than three hundred thousand, we had to be very specific in our parameters. What it actually is showing is that we're a much more dense community than our existing comp plan is reflecting. Does that make sense? Which I think a lot of us already knew, but it was, I think the planning commission that was here in the late teens, no offense if you were part of that planning commission of the city at the time, you didn't really have enough staff and your consultants really taking a step back and saying, are we sure we're doing it right? We really, at the time, were kind of just, what do we need to do to check Met Council's boxes and move on? Because frankly, I think the commission, the city, maybe with a capital C or maybe a community with a little C, was it maybe the most favorable with the Met Council and just wanted to get through it and get it done and move on. But it, in this analysis with the Met Council that Nathan and I have done, we have recognized that we have an opportunity right now to establish a new baseline. And that establishment of that new baseline is either going to be done one of two ways. One, it's going to take, we're just going to take the Met Council's data. So going back, in twenty twenty-four, we had two comprehensive plan amendments. One was the former daycare, and one was Shadow Creek Estates. When we started those comp plan amendments, we learned, because it wasn't until we were submitting to the Met Council that the data we had in-house was not consistent with the data the Met Council had. So we knew we were going to have to do a city amendment to get our data to match the Met Council's. And so we can do that one of two ways. We can take the Met Council's data. We can just say, Met Council, you have our acreages. You, this is what you said we have. Or we can take this analysis that Nathan and I have done. We can update our acreages. We can do that acreage update based on that, adding in that calculation of the two and a half acres, the three hundred thousand, taking that out of our developable area, and then bringing those densities up higher. It's not crazy high, but it's bringing up slightly higher. Why this is, why staff is bringing this to you now and kind of the intent of this project at the moment is that it, it sets us up in a good mid-planning cycle position. So new people on the commission, I think you've probably heard it maybe from Ken and I, but if it's news to you, the Met Council requires us to update our comprehensive plan every ten years. We will be getting next year what's called the systems statement from the Met Council, which is going to be our mandate. It's going to be the Met Council saying, these are our goals. How are you going to achieve our goals? You make goals that relate to our goals, and then you make strategies to achieve those strategies so that we as a region can all be on the same page.
As long as our goals are consistent with their goals.
As long as our goals are consistent with our goals, then we'll be fine. But what this does is it actually sets us up in a much more favorable position for that future planning study or any future assessment we might do before we update our comp plan, such as reevaluate the Highway sixty-one corridor so that we don't see a strip of apartment buildings down it. Now, since I started this analysis, I've learned a lot more about our community. I've learned a lot more about infrastructure. I've learned a lot more about policy, and I think it's probably premature to think the entire sixty-one corridor is going to be apartments in the next five years. Not saying it's not possible, but right now I don't think it's as much of a community conversation as it may be what I thought it was at the end of twenty-two, when I'm getting apartment building inquiry after apartment building, inquiry after apartment building. So that's kind of the purpose, intent and benefit, and I hope that was well described in here. If not, I hope I shared with you just more information that gives everybody the understanding of what is before you tonight. Because now we're about to enter heavy stuff. So in order for us to align our data, staff is proposing that we align our data by taking our revised data because it's more beneficial to us. Why would we take the Met Council's data and just take that and move on, right? Like, let's make this data work for us, understand for us, and then also be at our, our greatest benefit. But to do that, what we need to do is we need to amend the tables, the housing and the jobs tables in our plan. I'm going to note really loudly for the record, no future land use map amendments are proposed. This does not affect anybody's property within the city. No one's, land use categories are changing, the maps aren't changing. It's just where we, how our calculation of our acreages and then the, versus the net and the gross developable areas. And then there's no changes to our MUSA boundary. Again, that's that urban, developable urban area or the staging plan, the twenty twenty, the twenty thirty, the twenty forty, as we talked about. Everybody on board? All right, seeing all the heads nod, I'm going to try to get through it quick.
Just make, just one thing.
Want to stop a minute? Are there questions thus far?
No. One of my big ones is our net developable area, as you're making those changes, you are taking out as undevelopable the mega acres of wetlands.
Yes. Yes.
Because it's, you know, on Shadow Creek, that was, to get to the density of acres, taking, really, the, the, the wetlands really didn't come out with those, with the previous calculations. And, and it.
Well, it's tricky because the acreage that is being, so again, in our comp plan, we have gross acreage, raw, twenty by twenty, hundred by hundred, right? That's, that's gross acreage. The net or the, the non-developable land area takes, or the, takes out wetlands, road right of ways, steep slopes, and now we're going to take out those parcels of two point five acres and three hundred thousand. The challenging part, Susan, is that the wetlands that are being removed right now, and that is still in the comp plan under page seventeen, it says, wetlands will be taken out. The wetlands that are taken out of our gross developable area is national wetland inventory. It is not individually surveyed property. So each of you, you know, collectively, you all own so many gross acres, but Jeff owns X amount. Well, the national wetland inventory does aerials and plant, you know, analysis by planes and drones and whatnot and says, okay, out of all of your hundred acres collectively, this is the area, fifty of it is, is wetland. But when each of you have your own survey done, you find out there's ten here and fifteen there. Next thing you know, cumulatively, it's seventy-five. Our, what we've netted out is only based on the national wetland inventory because that's the only aggregate data that we can have. So until the time of development, and we actually get a delineated survey of a property, which that delineated wetland is netted out, that's then what, where all of a sudden your gross developable starts, or your net developable starts getting smaller and smaller, and it gets trickier to just, you got to put a road in there, and you, but our local roads can't be netted out, and it's.
Thank you.
Everybody still on the same page? I'm hoping to get through this really quickly. All right, so we're going to just review the tables really quick. Two point eight or two dash eight is the net residential density. So that purpose is to, the picture of overall density of the city, that includes undeveloped but developed, developable land. The proposed change, this is where we talk about that improvements over three hundred thousand dollars in value on less than two and a half acres. So we're going to take out those other development constraints, our wetlands, our road right of ways, our, all of those other things, and that three hundred thousand dollar property. Included in your packet was the final tables. Our request was made to review the track change tables. And frankly, I didn't, when I looked at the track change tables, they kind of wanted to give me a seizure. I'm not saying we can't sit and look at these. Frankly, this is where I'm going to say, I had to bring Nathan in on this project because I've been doing this for twenty years, and I don't do this stuff every day. We only do it every ten years. And Nathan is in and out of communities and comp plans all the time. I am not a subject matter expert, so I take a look at these tables and I gloss over. I honestly, it'd be surprising, really frankly, if any of you really wanted to dive through these. That's why we included these. So here's our net residential density. And this is just our going through how many, in our future land use designation, where there's single family units, multifamily, what the gross acres are, development constraints, where we then have net residential acres, and where we're getting our density from. Does that make sense to everybody thus far?
Yep.
Seeing some head nods. Again, there's that strike through version, and I'm happy to provide this to anybody. So twelve dash, two dash twelve, the planned land use characteristics. The purpose is to summarize the total and percent of land area. There's no significant change to this one, but that's just going through. Here's all of our gross acres of each of the land use categories, and this is the percent of the total. So again, this is where it's changing, flipping back over. I know an inquiry was made earlier today to me about the open water as fourteen point three percent of the city. And we've talked many times, there's more water in the city than that fourteen point three acres. And whether or not our fourteen point three acres needs to be increased to allow for, or to, because open water should include things like wetlands. Your gross acres here doesn't include the wetlands. But then when we move into our future areas, that this one here.
The green table, the twenty twenty-three future land use? Is that the one you're?
Now I'm getting myself all a little, little turned around. Regardless, when we get to net, when you see a table that says the developable acres later, that's netting out the wetlands. That's netting out that road right of way that, that, so that's where we do account for wetlands. It's just not in this, the gross category. Does that help answer your question earlier, Susan?
Yep, I'm getting there.
Okay. Table two thirteen, guided land use acres for developable land uses. So again, this is just the amount of developable and undevelopable land. This is the one that's going to then pull in those wetlands in that undevelopable land by land use category. The biggest changes in here is displaying the developable and the non-developable acreages in a cumulative manner. And that's where we're breaking out that non-developable area by development decade. Do I have the wrong table in there? Is this, did I just include the wrong table? Two twelve, I've seen it's two thirteen, I'll have to pull up two thirteen.
So on, on that table, two dash thirteen. So on, on that table, two-dash-thirteen, under ag, it's non-MUSA, which you consider seventeen-hundred-and-twenty-six acres to be developable?
Hold on just one second, let me pull that, I just didn't include that in my presentation. I probably.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So in agriculture?
Yeah.
This line item here?
Yeah. So if it's non-MUSA, getting empty squat housing, houses per acre would be challenging.
So as a reminder, we have, we are a community with a split designation. So we have. We have emerging suburban on kind of the west side of sixty-one and north of Highway ninety-seven. And then everything else kind of to the southeast of the city is in our diversified rule, rule. I got the comp plan right in front of me.
Rural residential?
Ah, it's a land use designation by the Met Council, and I just don't have it on me at the moment. We're not required to develop to that urban density in that area outside of the emerging suburban classification. So where in the non-MUSA, it talks about the developable acres and non-developable acres. It doesn't inherently, it's just saying these are areas that are developable, but that developable in the agricultural doesn't count towards the urban density standard.
Three units.
The three units of her acre. That is seen when you get into the big one here, where we get into that outside the urban service area. See, this is where then we have the agricultural district where we get into. See, we talk about, here's what's already developed, but then we don't actually call for units and acres in our future developing years because that's not in the MUSA area. Do you see what is on the screen? And that would be on the big table that I had to print for all of you because the big table really takes the data from all those other tables and puts it all together.
As I was looking at thirteen, as I went left to right, twenty-twenty to thirty on rural residential, developable acres forty-two, non-developable fifty-two, and then something happened in the twenty-thirty to forty and beyond twenty-forty. And all of a sudden, in non-MUSA, rural residential became twenty-six-hundred developable acres.
Yeah, but it's.
And I wasn't sure.
It's not, it's in the, it's, it's, it's. Anything that's not in the MUSA does not count to our urban density standards.
Okay.
The three to six units per acre, it has a different density calculation associated with it. So while there is a big number there and it says that that's developable, it's developable to the non-urban standards, so well-septic acreage lots, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
So when we get some of these big numbers to jump in, like under the low-medium density, that's the MUSA line moving?
That's the MUSA line moving, that's exactly what that is. That's the anticipation that, so that you're going to see that jump kind of happen in that low-medium density residential in that twenty-thirty because we're going to start moving from the Headwaters Parkway and the MUSA line is just south of there, further south. And that's where we're going to see that new residential being developed.
Thank you.
That help folks kind of understand? So I can keep running through these tables with each of you. They were in your, they were in your packet, twelve, two-fifteen. This is where we're really showing our work of how, where we're going to get three units per acre in the MUSA areas. So again, this is where we're taking information from all those other tables and we're putting it in here. Here's where we're showing our work. I'm happy to provide these to anybody who'd like them. Two-sixteen, we get into the employment density calculations. This stuff is stuff where you just have to show that you're being able to have areas sufficient to have employment areas and that we're achieving that. Two-seventeen is where we put it all together, and that's where we really kind of get to the total units, total acres, total jobs down at the bottom. I don't know if the formatting worked the best, but it was much better, I think, in your packet. Development potential for affordable housing. Essentially, what we're saying is we have land area sufficient enough to meet our affordable housing goals. That's where that kind of comes in, where we see us potentially putting in that potential affordable housing in the high-density mixed-use, downtown mixed-use areas. Tables associated with that. So I zoomed through that, but I zoomed through that because it's a, it's a heavy topic, a lot of data's in the table. We vetted through this already with the Met Council, they know it's coming. But the intent here now tonight is to ask you, are you ready for us to update our comp plan so that we have consistent data with the Met Council, with the data that your subject matter experts are recommending is in the best interest of the city? So our next steps here are affected adjacent jurisdiction review. We've already sent it out to the cities and the counties that it touches. Nobody's got any challenges with the development or with the amendment. Tonight, you'd hold a public hearing, you'd make recommendation to the city council. City council is anticipated to hear this on January ninth. Unless this body isn't ready to make a recommendation, then we would push that. And then we'd submit this to the Met Council to, for their consideration. So Chair, that's my presentation tonight. Do you or anybody else on the commission have any other further questions?
My question would be, are you satisfied that what you're proposing will be accepted by the Met Council?
Yes, they do have to, this isn't an administrative review. So many of the Met Council applications are administratively reviewed. This will have to go to the full council. But we've worked hand-in-hand with their staff already, that they understand what we're doing, especially in terms of the netting out those developable, those lots that are two-and-a-half acres. Just because even, you know, even when you're looking south of Headwaters Parkway, there's a lot of farm fields. There's a number of parcels down there that are, it's got a nice single-family home. Those properties are not going to, they're not going to split, and they're not going to end up becoming an urban environment. I would say in, certainly probably in my lifetime, certainly through the next ten years. And so this is, I think, a good baseline for us to reestablish and help provide a greater proof that we're, we're exceeding, not exceeding, we're going well beyond the density standards that we've been saying we've been doing. But not too much to where they should change our classification and require us to be even more dense.
Other questions to staff, Susan?
The twenty-forty comp plan was changed by the city council after the planning commission, and residents had gone through a great deal of effort. And that MXR was done, done without. That was not provided to the council from the planning commission. The council did that huge piece of MXR.
You mean the highway business? The MXR is the mixed residential where we're getting.
Right, that was not what was presented by the work of the community that had come together or the planning commission. I have a real concern as we're moving forward that we're, we may end up with a high density that has no services near it. The whole concept between, behind having, you know, the apartment buildings near the transit center, which will never have transit, was that originally we had planned to have that little commercial area, which is now another apartment building and the yada, 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 to be services for that area so that in your apartment building that didn't provide for two cars for a, you know, for an apartment, you didn't have to have two cars. I, I have some real concerns about saying, yes, we're going to, in future, have this dense stuff without services that are nearby, reasonably nearby.
So the things that I can offer you, at least in terms of the southwest corridor area, some of you may know that the EDAs authorized a grant application in the work on a southwest corridor study to look at the phasing of infrastructure down in that southwest corridor, to really start planning out how we want our road network being ahead of development instead of just waiting until development comes to us. So we'll be working with Bolton Mink, we're looking to secure a grant from the county. That work should be going on this spring and summer. The whole intent of that is to have better planning and approach and then connectivity to that true southwest corner that's guided for non-residential. So you've kind of got the Headwaters area as a not, guide, was intended to be non-residential, but you've got some higher densities there, you've got some services there. The city still owns Headwaters one-twenty-three guided for business park, but allows for other service uses, some of those other things in there. And then that parkway, that Headwaters Parkway would lead to, including the trail system along there, is going to lead then to another non-residential area, another service-based area, potential job center, that sort of thing. I hear that, I've heard much of the fact that that southwest corner was guided differently. I can understand why the council at that time chose to do that for increased tax base, for the services to that area that's going to be a large swath of residential, that MXR area between Headwaters and Hugo essentially. None of that has anything to do with tonight, though.
Okay.
None of that's going to change, that's still sitting there. And those are conversations that as we start to talk about the twenty-fifty plan, that we certainly can have.
Other questions of staff?
Thank you.
Hearing none, this is a public hearing. We ask if you wish to speak to this issue, please step up to the lecture and state your name and address for the record and then spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on this proposed amendment. So we'll open the public hearing at eight-fifty-three PM. Does any wish, anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anyone online or anything to be read into the?
I received no comment nor to have anything for the record to be read in.
Nothing online. I'll ask one more time, does anyone wish to speak to this application? Can we still have no one online?
No, sir.
No one jumped right on to give us their two cents? All right, seeing no one come forward and no one online, nothing to be read in. We were close to public hearing at eight-fifty-four PM. Tonight, commissioners, we are looking to make a recommendation to the city council. Page thirteen kind of gives us an idea of what their recommendation could potentially be. So further discussion, questions of staff, myself, anybody? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the text amendments proposed to chapter two and four of the Forest Lake twenty-forty comprehensive plan as proposed and with the findings provided by staff with the four attachments.
Second.
I have a motion, second, and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll move to our updates part. We'll start with, is councilperson Roberts online tonight?
No, sir.
So Abby, what would you like to add?
I have, I have three just things to briefly, brief you on. When I first started here at the city, I heard at this body as well as with our parks commission, the question and desire for increased community code enforcement. So earlier this year, the city council adopted new nuisance, public nuisance ordinance. And year-to-date, as you know, we're a complaint-based system, but year-to-date, we received one-hundred-and-sixty-two complaints. We've resolved eighty-three percent of them, but in November alone, in a two-week time period, we received one every other day. Like, so this is, and this is something that other than Ken and I, we also have done our admin, but that you're looking at your code enforcement team. We did have some help in the summer with our intern, Jordan. I am going to be looking to see maybe if the council lets me retool those dollar sums so that we don't have one person so concentrated in the summer, but we can kind of spread that out a little bit better. I do, we'll let you know that of those, we are working on four hazardous building complaints. These are complaints that are necessitating us and the council considering actually forcing orders for potential removal of structures. We do also have two of our hundred and, what did I say, sixty-two code enforcement complaints that remain in criminal court, and that is our choosing just because of the difficult nature of the individuals and the violations. I'm just sharing this all with you because we came a long way this year in code enforcement that I can't say was nonexistent, but when you only had one person and then Ken and I still being new and our team kind of growing, was really difficult. We're still not where we want to be, we're still complaint-driven. We appreciate everybody's patience as we kind of got things up and running and got things up and running in a electronic environment tied to properties before complaints were coming in. And I kid you not, there might have just been a whiteboard on a wall somewhere because we don't have good documentation of those historical complaints. But now, if somebody called up and they said, hey, I was curious about a complaint, we can write into our property system, we can see. And so just giving you that update, but that process improvement's ongoing.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, well, I mean, you don't make new regulations for us to not enforce them. It just has been tricky to enforce with the limited staff and with policies and procedures. And so it's kind of a big undertaking, but we're, we're getting there. I do want to let you know, we have vetted six residential subdivisions that are in some form of potentially submitting for subdivision review in twenty-twenty-five. Next, your next meeting, you'll see two different residential, maybe Ken was going to provide these updates to you, and I'm really sorry if I'm stealing all of his thunder. We'll be providing two concept plans for your review in January. We have another, I believe, in the hopper, and yesterday I just got another call wondering what do we need to submit. So we are, we're, remember that development that happened ten years ago to Hugo and has continued to happen to Hugo and to Lino and to everybody else? They see north of the split as a nice opportunity. So you'll have some, quite a bit of work, including then also some commercial redevelopment that we're vetting out. Just for reference, PGA investments, a site plan that you reviewed on Forest Road and Highway ninety-seven industrial project. They're not, they barely got the shell roughed in here before the winter. They're already two-thirds, their occupancy is already at two-thirds. They should be anticipated occupancy the day they're getting their CO or full occupancy. So people are moving, businesses are moving into Forest Lake. So with all that said, I did want to let you know that the council did approve the twenty-twenty-five budget on Monday evening, which does include a planning manager position. So we'll be working to add another person to our team. That person will, you'll see their face. Their role is to help manage current planning efforts. They'll have some role in the EDA. But the community development department is also going to be involved with the administration management oversight of the land use at the airport, as well as starting discussions of moving the building inspections division out of the fire department into the community development department. Frankly, we can't just kind of keep taking on all these divisions and services without some additional support. And then lastly, because I'm on staff updates, I just want to let you know we don't have an update yet on the city administrator search, but as soon as we do, we'll keep you informed.
Questions for Abby? Ken?
Just a couple of things. We're not going to meet in two weeks because that's Christmas, so go ahead and take that night off. We will have definitely a meeting on January eighth, as Abby touched on. We know some concept plans that we'll be bringing to you, and we'll probably have two meetings in January. I foresee the train keeping us busy with line reviews, concept plans, all those kind of things. We don't want you to miss us too much. That's really all I have.
Questions for Ken? Kevin?
I'm good, thank you.
Tim?
Good.
Susan?
I'm good, but I want folks to know that, um, Community Thread, um, has expanded their transit team so that if you know of elders or folks that are, are home bombed because they cannot get a ride to the grocery store or the dentist, Community Thread does have that activity available in Forest Lake and Scandia, um, and now. And, um, it's a big service, um, for our residents, especially now that winter's coming in and some of the elders are, are not comfortable driving. That, that, that opportunity to get a ride, um, is, is available now that it didn't used to be.
Thanks for bringing that up, Susan. It's actually available anywhere north of highway ninety-seven now with their expansion. And those routes will actually, you can take routes out of the county. Whereas right now, some of the other services that are available, you can't take it to like the Wyoming hospital. And so they'll even go, um, across the border into Wisconsin if needed. So it's a great service. It's a per-membership, but it is a sliding scale income-based membership fee. Um, and I believe, uh, seniors can have up to six rides per month, so thank you for bringing that up. That's something that I should be, um, there's lots of things I should remember.
But it's, you know, it, it's a transportation thing that, that's, you know, our planning commissioner needs to think about those things. I gave my second ride today, so I was, I'm pretty psyched about it.
You can volunteer as well to be a driver.
And the training wasn't hard. Even, even I could understand it.
On that note, Don?
I have nothing.
Jesse?
Just one note is there's a craft fair at the American Legion, and the proceeds go to help the Women's Auxiliary on Saturday. Starting in nine, I believe.
Jeff?
I met with Mayor-elect Roberts, and as you know, I'm on the, elected for city council starting in twenty-five. He's asked me to take on the position as your liaison. So, see you in January.
Very good.
Congratulations. Thank you.
On behalf of the commission, thank you for your service on the planning commission, Jeff.
Been a pleasure, and I enjoy, I enjoyed it, and I look forward to working with you here in the future as well.
We look forward to great updates from you now that you know our demands.
Do the best I can here, sir, mister, mister.
Mr. Chair.
I do just wanna note with the, for the record, um, Commissioner Larson, as, uh, being a, a council member-elect, January eighth will be his last official meet, eighth, ninth, eighth? Ken?
For which?
The eighth, for the next planning commission meeting.
That's he, yes.
Would be his last planning commission meeting as a planning commission voting member. On the thirteenth, he'll get sworn in as the council, then he'll become the liaison thereafter. That will create a vacancy in his position. You see, and so if you know folks that are interested in being on the planning commission, that it would be an application-based system. The application form is available online. I'm happy, Ken's happy to chat with folks what that entails, pass them along our way. But we'd be looking for fresh blood, fresh meat.
I have made recommendations to a couple people to come and see you, so.
Great. And I have also talked with, uh, Mayor-elect Roberts, just of, um, different structures that some communities use where their liaisons actually are voting members of commissions. Um, so I don't know if that's something that we'll explore, but we wouldn't be able to do that right away. So, just to let everyone know, Jeff's last meeting will be the next meeting, and then you'll see his face probably. We'll, we'll welcome him at the.
I guess I might be sitting next to you.
Yeah, we'll welcome him to the, uh, the staff table to be a part of conversations, um, in a different fashion.
That was a little premature thanking him first time since he's still got some time left.
No, you can. You never know for, some people don't show up their last meeting, right?
Don't, I'll blow, don't blow the dust off the hat quite yet.
It was nice to see everybody here tonight.
Uh, lastly, I wish everyone a happy holiday season. Have a great time. See you in January. So on that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Second, it's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you all very much.